As it is in heaven, give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for the kingdom, the power and the glory are yours now and forever. I remain standing for the recognition of the traditional landowners. I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting here today on the traditional land of the Breakalong people, of the Gunnai Kernai nation, and I pay respect to their elders present. If there are other elders present, I would also like to acknowledge them. Thank you. Yes, we do have a gallery. I'll read the conditions of entry. All members of the community attending the council meeting are asked to behave in a courteous and respectful manner before, during and after the meeting. And respectively, this includes no placards, posters or materials other than personal effects. In accordance with the local law, the chair may order and cause the removal of any person, including a councillor, which disrupts any meeting or fails to comply with the direction. This council meeting is currently being livestreamed and speakers, there are no speakers, so there's no need for me to read that one. Recording of council meetings, in accordance with the locals' law, a person must not operate audiotape or other recording equipment at any council meeting without first obtaining the consent of the council or the chair, as the case may be. Such consent may at any time during the course of such meeting be revoked by council or the chair, as the case may be. If I might just point out to the audio team, my microphone is booming. I moved it away because the boom was louder. Okay. All right, councillors, we'll start. Are there any apologies for absence? I can see you're all here. Are there any declarations of interest? Councillor Harriman. Councillor White.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am going to declare a conflict of interest in relation to item 14.2 when we go to waiving of fees, etc.
Okay. Sir Harriman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to declare an indirect interest to item 16.1. Resolution two, section 78b. On the executive authority lines and also on the executive.
Thank you. All right, councillors, we'll move on to adoption of minutes of the previous meeting. That's the meeting of 2nd of September 2019. Do I have a mover, councillor?
Happy to move.
Gibson. If I might just point out to the audio team, we're all booming now. Councillor White says it's only internal, so. Okay, thank you.
That's pretty loud. Need to knock it down.
I had councillor Gibson moving. I need a second there. Councillor Clancy, thank you. Any opposition councillors? Any councillor wish to speak? If not, declare that carried. Acknowledgements. Councillors may raise at this point any formal acknowledgements that need to be made.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, I'd actually like to acknowledge the grade four students at Gray Street Primary School. That's better. The grade four students at Gray Street Primary School have been running a campaign this year, as you can tell from the wonderful shirt I'm wearing, which is an extra small size, is Save the Bull Bull Frog. The reason I want to acknowledge this is I attended their market day as a fundraiser about three weeks ago. It was organised just by the grade fours for the rest of the school, where they raised over $4,000 in one day for research and to help the Melbourne Zoo fund research into the bull ball frog, which is an endangered species. They have through the course of the year raised over $10,000 for this cause. Now, the Melbourne Zoo is so taken aback, not only with the amount of money they have raised, but with the enthusiasm that they have actually spread the word that the bull ball frog is an endangered species, how it's become endangered with an imported frog, which I can give all the councillors all the details because they beat it into me consistently at the market day. But also how they've gone about with posters, with Facebook, with social media, with a whole range of ways of making the community aware of just how vulnerable the bull ball frog is and what needs to be done to save it. And the Melbourne Zoo is so impressed with this that at the market day they actually sent two of their representatives down to actually talk to the kids about the frogs, but also to talk to other kids within the school about the frogs. And they have a researcher up at Mount Bull Bull as we speak, who will be putting his first report on his findings of his research to the grade four students at Gray Street Primary School in acknowledgement of all the work they've done. And I just thought, for a group of grade four kids, who the teachers have basically said to the kids this year, you take it on, we're not going to drive it, and it's the best result they've ever had. I just think it's absolutely amazing. And if those in the gallery or out in Facebook land would love one of these t-shirts, they do come in other than extra small, which I'm wearing, which is a Save the Bull Bull Frog t-shirt. They're available for $20 at Gray Street Primary School. And I just think it's a great endeavour and it just showcases the quality of kids we have growing up in Latrobe City. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. After the advert, we'll move back to the meeting. Any other councillor wish to make an acknowledgement? If not, move on to public participation time. There are no public questions, so we'll move past that. No public speakers again, so move past that section and we'll move straight on to the business of the meeting. Item 12.1, petition calling for free disposal of silage wrap. Do I have a mover?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
So, Callaghan's mover, seconding councillor Harriman, seconding. Do I have any opposition councillors? No opposition. Does any councillor wish to speak?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, the nature of petitions that come to council is they are, initially they are on the table to allow for us to be able to have a report prepared. That is the same process. It's being followed in terms of this recommendation. We were approached by Robin Dawson, who had the opportunity to bring to a clearer focus for us concerns that he had in relation to the impact of disposal of silage wrap, its cost, the environmental impact when it's not appropriately disposed of. And he felt that there was very clearly an opportunity for council to consider the provision of free silage wrap disposal within our municipality. This is something that is undertaken within other municipalities and he wanted us to consider this matter. Hence his request for the petition to be considered by council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Callaghan. Councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, would like to thank councillor Callaghan for her words. And would also like to point out that a number of years ago, council actually did provide this service. We signed a contractor up. Unfortunately, the contractor wasn't able to deliver on said contract, which is unusual for a contractor. And that's what's created a lot of these problems. But I do thank councillor Callaghan for her bringing this up and do thank the petitioners for bringing it back up as an issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Clancy.
Ever so briefly, Mr. Mayor, just when Robin first spoke to us about this at a Glengarry township meeting, he was very concerned about it and we talked about going through a petition process to have this report brought back. Fifty-one people have signed the petition and it's obviously quite a large issue out in the farming community. Silage wrap, if it is disposed of correctly, can be of benefit to the recycling industry. And if it's not disposed correctly, it's either burnt or buried and that is not an option that we really want to do. So, congratulations to the petitioners for having a go at this and putting their names on the petition and bringing it to council's attention so we can address what is quite a significant issue for farmers.
Thank you, councillor Clancy. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just quickly want to mention that over the years, council, Latrobe City councillors had a regular meeting session with what we call the VFF Farmers Working Group. And in times past, the topic of silage wrap has been part of those discussions. And so in terms of getting the report together in relation to this matter, there is some history in the place here that will be able to be used to advantage in terms of of understanding the issues and how it was addressed in times past.
Thank you, councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Callaghan wish to close? On that basis, we've had no opposition but speakers. We'll put it to the vote. Those in favour. Councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor War, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor Callaghan, councillor Clancy and myself carried unanimously. Right, we'll move on, councillors, to item 14.1, the next item, which is on page 28 of the agenda, STEM exchange to sister cities.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose an alternate motion, if possible. This is a late alternate motion, which has only been circulated in the last half an hour or so. I'm not sure if councillors have a copy of that yet. It has been circulated via email, but I'm not sure if hard copies have been made available. So just.
Certainly you're able to propose an alternate right up to the.
I just wonder if we are able to get copies to the councillors. Yeah, thanks.
Councillors, we might just take a break for two or three minutes until we get a copy of it up on the screen. So, somebody would like to sing, tap dance? There we go. Right, councillors, we're back on air and the alternate motion as proposed by councillor Clancy is now on the screen behind me and on the screen in front of you. So, the alternate motion is being moved by councillor Clancy. I'll be looking for somebody to second. Councillor Gibson. It was. Okay, well, just very softly. Do I have any opposition, councillors? There's opposition to the alternate motion, as you can see there. I'll give you a minute to say to have a quick look at it. Everybody comfortable with the substance of the motion? Do I have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor Clancy.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just by way of explanation for the new addition point two there. This brings in line with the discussion that we had during our briefing around this STEM programme, the exchange programme, that now includes a team from our International Engagement and Investment Officer and Support Manager from Latrobe City Council to participate in the exchange. the exchange. That's the new point there. Not new information to everyone because we did discuss that at length, but just picks up something that was missed out in the report. This motion is for council to approve the STEM exchange programme to Taizhou and to Tagasako in 2020. This is a very, very interesting programme and a great opportunity for young people who are interested in science, technology, engineering and maths, not only their studies here in Australia and Gibbsland, but also to see what's happening in the other parts of the world and certainly the strong connections that we have with Taizhou in China and Tagasako in Japan and our connections with the high schools there, their education precincts and universities and polytechnic colleges as well. This is a great opportunity for these people and I think that it's going to be very beneficial not only to the people who go, but also to the ongoing science and technology aspects of our city.
Thank you councillor Clancy. Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak? Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor White?
Just to reiterate the remarks made by councillor Clancy and reminding ourselves that it is about science, technology, engineering and maths, the STEM programme that we're talking about and we're focusing on year nine to twelve students within our, who are resident in our municipality, who would be interested in being involved in this particular journey in 2020. This is a fantastic opportunity for people from our community to be able to get that international experience, not only in terms of their just cultural understanding, but more importantly about what's going on in the rest of the world in relation to science, technology and engineering aspects of the way life operates in other parts of the world. But there is the opportunity, well, the first thing to say, next thing to say is really that the costs of getting there for individuals, well, it's all, there will be a requirement on the individuals to help fundraise for the particular journey and there will be funds to go toward each individual successful candidate who gets there. But also, there will be the need, as I said before, for the individuals and families to help generate further income to supplement that which is available through the avenues that are available. And you might remember, Mr Mayor, that we also are prepared as a council to provide two scholarships to fully fund the delegation costs to support participants from families with limited financial resource. And I think that's a great gesture on the council's part on behalf of the community to create that facility and opportunity for youngsters who are less well off to be able to have that fantastic experience. So I think that there's been a lot of work going into the preparation of this particular programme. There's a copy of the suggested or draft of the itinerary that's going to be undertaken, both the sister city of Tagasako and the sister city of Taizhou in China. And so I really want to emphasise that this is a rare and unique opportunity for youngsters within our community to take a journey of a lifetime, if you like, and really inspire and stimulate them into becoming really dedicated to this arena, which is the future for, in terms of job opportunities.
Thank you councillor White. We have another speaker. If not, as we've had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, I'll turn that... Failed to offer councillor Clancy the opportunity to close the debate. And as it was carried unanimously, I think we might slip one through. Right, we'll move on to item 14.2. Okay, we'll wait till you've left the chamber councillor White.
Moving, Mr Mayor.
You are moving the alternate. Okay. It is the one that's up there, is it?
Mr Mayor, it's not now the alternate, no, go back to the alternate motion. That's the one on my, no, sorry, that one. That's the one I'm moving, Mr Mayor, the one that's on screen now, the alternate motion number two.
All clear, the councillor Harryman has moved alternate, which is alt number two. We'll call that one. Do I have a second, councillor Clancy obviously? Councillor Gibson standing, all right? You've been beaten to it. Is it my microphone's causing the boom or everybody's okay? I thought I had that called. Just because the two ladies in the gallery have gone home already, there's no need to... Yes, okay, well, I had a mover in a second. Do I have any opposition? No. Any councillor wish to speak? No speakers, no opposition. Carried. Okay, we'll move on to, I'll get councillor White back. Apparently the local law requires it. So we'll move on whilst councillor White is joining us. We'll move on to item 15.1, which is the delegation to the CEO to award various contracts, excuse me, up to a contract budget. It's on page 51 of the agenda. Councillor White has rejoined us. Do I have a mover? Councillor Howe moving. Do I have a second, councillor McFarlane? Do I have any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, Mr Mayor. All we're doing here is delegating to the CEO to award the contracts for the two said projects. They're both, the first one is the construction of the Catterick Crescent Pavilion. This is caused by the development of the Trowland Sports Stadium. They've been pushed out of their old home. They are going to be without a home for this cricket season. Similar circumstances for the squash club. They were pushed out of their home due to the Gov Hub getting built. They will be without a home until the renovations are completed out of Churchill. So it's important that these things get rolling as soon as possible so the cricketers and the squash players are inconvenienced as little as possible by situations that is well truly out of their control.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor McFarlane? Any other councillor wish to speak? No councillor? Councillor White?
I need to make the observation, Mr Mayor, and it was, was, that the, as you can see in the report, that as councillor Howe did indicate, but as the report indicates, we're still waiting for the LBAF, the Trowland Authority Funding Approval, for the Churchill Leisure Centre aspect of the project. And so I trust that that's not going to be something that's going to be of any, or their decision is going to be imminent, let's put it that way.
Thanks councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, councillor Howe, would you like to close? Okay. Speaker, no opposition but speakers, we'll have to put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor White, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harryman, councillor Kellygan, councillor Clancy and myself, declare that one carried. We'll move now councillors to item 16.1, page 68 of the agenda, 2019-20 Community Grant Programme Recommendations. You'll notice on page 68 of the agenda, there are two recommendations on the one item. What we have at the moment is proposed resolution number one. Do I have a mover?
Moved.
Councillor White, councillor Gibson to second. Have any opposition? This is the proposed motion, excuse me, number one. No opposition. Councillor White, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So, this particular programme, a committee grants programme, annual committee grants programme, I believe is a, and I'm sure all the councillors agree, is a very critical part of what this council does in relation to interfacing with our communities and particularly those groups within our communities who are volunteering their time and to, in all the administrative tasks associated with making clubs and all those other organisations, service clubs and community-based organisations, making them tick. And we really, it really behoves us, there's that word again, to acknowledge their contributions. Thank you very much. And to our community, because they are the social fabric of our community and without them, what a burden we'd have on this council otherwise. And so be able to assist in a financial way the various events and community development activities, along with the significant community minor capital works programme that is able to be accessed through this particular funding provision that we have annually in our budget, means that so much of our physical assets and, but also our strengthening of our community can be achieved through these, well, relatively insignificant allocations. And so that it's an encouragement to our community and volunteers to be able to sustain their efforts and have that energy to continue to drive and take great pride in all those various individual community-based organisations that they belong to and that are part of our community. And we certainly, you know, it's really important that they continue to be encouraged into the future and this particular significant programme provides that opportunity.
Thanks councillor White. Councillor Gibson?
Oh, all right. Okay, look, I endorse what my fellow councillor has said because we all know that any community group that actually puts their hands up for a grant, what we give them is just a small amount of what they actually put into the project, whatever the project is. So we get so much more, well, the whole community gets so much more out of it than we ever do putting into it. So I really encourage in the future any more community groups to put their hands up for it, but I also encourage the ones that have put their hand up for doing that and look forward to seeing what projects come out of this. Thank you.
And I shall leave the room, Mr Mayor, because I've declared an interest.
Oh, just briefly, Mr Mayor, it follows on from what councillor White said with the previous motion. This is, whilst it's been split out separately, it's the same context and it's about supporting those many groups in our community who for a small amount of money make a lot of difference to our municipality.
I agree with what my fellow councillor said. It's mine now? Okay. But a little bit more, because this also has your events categories. So, you know, it's great the projects they do, but we also have events, what the community are running and they put on some fine events with a little bit of help from us.
Just very briefly, what we're talking about is an old road reserve that has been discontinued. That was back in 1986. Parts of the land have been transferred to the adjoining properties and the balance has been fenced off through the properties at 1826 and 28 Finlayson Crescent. Council has received an application from 26 Finlayson Crescent that wish to purchase the land that has been fenced to their property. So what we'll be doing is we'll be undertaking a consultation with the public, of our intentions to consider the land for sale and invite their public for comment. We'll then proceed to, if we do proceed to sell, then be independently valued and sold at that price, or at least bear in mind that they are using that land at the moment for nothing, so it will be something for us.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would encourage everybody who is concerned about this, because I've been stopped by people about this, to put their submissions in, if they're happy or they're not happy, to put the submissions in because it's not a done deal by us. Moving this motion tonight doesn't mean it is going to be sold, we are just putting it out for submissions to come in. Thank you. We are just putting it out for submissions to come in. Thank you.
2020 ordinary council meeting dates. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson to move. Councillor Howe to second. Do I have any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Gibson. I put you down as decline to speak. Councillor Howe? Decline. Any other councillor wish to speak? No. Do you wish to close, councillor Gibson? I take it you don't. Okay, no speakers, no opposition councillors. That is carried unanimously. Move on to 17.5, tabling of assembly of councillor records. Fairly straightforward this one. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson, thank you. Second. Councillor Clancy, thank you very much. Any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak? No. Councillor Clancy, do you wish to speak? No. Any other councillor wish to speak? No. Councillor Gibson, I take it you do not wish to close? Thank you. I declare that one carried unanimously. Urgent business councillors, I haven't been approached, but I have to ask, are there any urgent business items to be raised? No. I'll move on to the meeting to be closed to the public. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson, do I have a second? Second councillor Law, beat you by a whisker. Any opposition councillors? I take it no one wishes to speak. Carried unanimously. The meeting is now closed to the public. I invite members of the gallery to join councillors for a cup of tea and say goodbye to those watching us on YouTube.